Honorable Member Mede. All protocols observed. I would like to welcome the honorable and everyone joining us today to the event. This event is to give the candidate an opportunity to talk to us. When I say us, I mean those of us in the diaspora and other Benue State citizens back home to kind of like tell us what they plan to do for the state when they get in office. And also to give us the opportunity to interact with them, to talk to them, to ask questions on how they intend to do that. The event will be approximately two hours or less depending. And I would like to advise us all to remain calm. When someone is speaking, we should allow him to allow him or her to finish what he's saying before somebody jumps in. This event is not a campaign event. And we should avoid any questions that are meant to embarrass the candidate. Our organization is not a political organization. All we're trying to do is to help educate the voters so that they can make an informed decision as to who should be their next governor. So let's avoid anything that are meant to tarnish the image or to embarrass the candidate. At the same time, I would like to encourage us to ask questions that border on the growth of Benue State. Those questions may be hard questions, but they are real questions. So we should allow those kind of questions. And with that said, I would allow the candidate to introduce himself. And before I say that, I got the manifesto of the candidate a little late. So I wasn't able to share it on the Muti GA, but I'm going to do that. But the candidate is going to talk to us, so ask him questions based on what he is telling us that he's going to accomplish. And then there are some generic questions which we all know border on the progress of our state. So we're going to ask those questions either way. So with all that, I would like to call on the candidate, Honorable James Bembata Mede, to to talk to us.
We can't hear you. I don't know if you have. Okay, so it's connecting to audio. So someone is asking, is it possible to see the candidate? Can the candidate or his team enable his video? And please let's exercise a bit of patience. There might be some technical issues with the candidate's device while they try to resolve it. Or you might use the chat, just use the chat to indicate that you can hear us and you're trying to resolve the issue. So someone is asking, does the candidate have a team member who can kick things off while we wait for him to connect? So if the candidate's team, if there's someone on there that can engage the platform, please go ahead and do so. You can feel free to unmute yourself.
Yes, superficial one will get you. Yeah, okay. Well, I'm going to put you on the speaker. I'm going to put you on the speaker, no mute myself, so you can be able to say something. We saw that you were trying to connect. So.
Yeah, Mr. President, we can hear you both. We can hear you on the candidate.
Yeah, they can hear you now, so you can continue to talk. Why you also simultaneously tried to connect through audio? And we will also prefer a video if that is possible. But in the meantime, you can continue to talk why you tried to connect through Zoom.
So what am I supposed to tell you now? Introduce myself or what?
Oh, yes, you can introduce yourself and tell us what you intend to achieve for Benue State. And then we'll have some questions. So we are waiting on you.
Mr. President, you're muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, is the candidate speaking?
No, he hasn't said anything yet.
Okay, yeah, it might be worthwhile if he disconnects and tries to join again. It might fix the issue.
Yeah, I think he should be able to hear you because I'm still connected to him on phone.
Yeah, I think someone also suggested the candidate should leave the Zoom meeting and rejoin. That might fix the issue.
I ignored the Zoom meeting and just spoke through the phone.
Yeah, also just speak to him, Mr. President.
Zoom meeting and talk through the president's phone. We can hear, we heard him, I heard him.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, but you can hear them, right? You can speak through my phone since you're having connection issues. And why you do that, you might also want to try to disconnect from Zoom. And then try to reconnect, but in the meantime, you can continue to talk to us through my phone since we are connected and they can hear you.
Mr. President, can you hear the candidate?
No, I can't hear him. I'm calling him on another phone now.
Okay.
Yes, honorable, it looks like we couldn't hear you again. So I'm calling you, this is Simon from Houston. So you can talk to us through this phone. Yes, and there was also a suggestion from one of the people on the meeting that you can disconnect from Zoom and try to reconnect. But in the meantime, just talk to us through this phone. We can hear you.
Okay, now.
Mr. President, do you mind putting him?
Can you all hear him?
Can you put him on speaker?
Yeah, he's on speaker.
I can hear him. He should go ahead and talk.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Richard.
Okay. Now, my name is Honorable James Mede Bembata. I am from Benue State. I am the candidate of the Social Democratic Party in the 2023 National election coming up soon. I took the decision of running for governorship when I saw the challenges in our state. I saw the global pain that would be undone. And I felt I should come in to contribute my quota and so my decision to run. Today, I'm here to answer your questions on signing my aspiration, on signing my intention for the state. Now I wait to hear from you whatever you may wish to ask me. Thank you. Hello?
Yes, honorable, is there any way you can maybe tell us what your plans are for the state?
Yes. My plans for the state are to make this state organ functional, that we may have a renewed Benue. We may have a renewed Benue through a rescue mission that our administration, if God bless, will come in, shall present in several areas. We know that there are several opportunities that come to human beings at various times in life. And this is one we are seeking that you would provide us. Our team intends to vitalize all the challenging areas that the state has been creating. Such areas of academic challenges, social security, health amongst the rest. You may see the issue of agriculture. Where Benue is known to be the food basket. Several things have happened that only those who are in the corridor of power are well. A lot of people don't know that Benue has been denied a lot of things. Benue has been deprived of even their rights. The name we are knowing some pilot projects in the cultural ministry of the President of Nigeria have taken place within the country. If there are selecting six or twelve things as such intervals for pilot project, Benue is never included. The second phase of selection in Benue was not also included. Separately, we're seeing a lot of challenges other administrations face. But just paying outside of the government, trying to advise sometimes some people who are in positions will not be able to understand exactly what you are telling them. And sometimes as you get their attention, they listen to you. When they get in there, they do what they want. We feel as a team that we will come in, if God bless, and change the narrative. Make sure every Benue person is happy by raising up all the dead organs of the state. And so we call ourselves the Rescue Team. Thank you.
Okay, honorable, I have a question from the audience here. And I'm going to read it to you. It says, "What achievements have you accomplished that have prepared you to be an effective governor?"
What? I thought it's all right?
Oh, yes, sir.
All right, I'll start first. I've accomplished several things in life, including business. In the area of business, I run a well-known property firm in Abuja, the city where I live. And then like a human being, a business is known by its charater. We don't have issues with people. We always achieve every request of our claims. And when we are unable, we are very sincere to them. That way, we see if we're having an opportunity to do a thing in government, we shall be sincere to our electorates. Also, as being a politician who has served also in government, even in government of Benue State. I was one of the early appointees when Governor Atum stepped into power in 2015. I was a senior special assistant to the governor on culture and tourism. In that area, I was able to achieve my best. In the area of tourism, I have documents that I will present to you that I did wonderful memos. I went to investigate how Kano Espat of Oklahoma came to Nigeria in 1981, precisely in Benue under the administration of Governor Parakut. How Ikogankato Ranch was established that time. I took time to find out about Iquay Wildlife Camp. I also sought out, started out the area of the Brabo. So many ventures that that administration presented in that period. I took time to round the state. In the area of tourism, I presented a working document to Zeslancy. I also went ahead to engage the Kano Espat again to come and vitalize Ikogankato Ranch. I was also able to acquire thinking fund of 52 billion euro for the state which was not endorsed by Zeslancy. And then in the area of culture, I was able to put in place what you now see as community volunteer guard. I called it the Benue Hunters Forum. I said to myself that, I hope you're hearing me out.
Yes, but you have about five minutes for each, to answer each question. So if you can work around that time, that would be great.
So I also did a working document on establishing what I call Benue Hunters Group, which includes also fishermen and women of Benue. The reason for this was that we noticed the innocent intruder, the full army husband and other terrorist group trying to invade the state. And so we said, it is a farmer, and even a farmer has a farm. A hunter within that area understands his farm more than him. Because when you move from the farm, it is a hunter that know the edges of your farm. He's going there to trap, search his own traps. He understands the environment better. Even in the night, the hunters and fishermen and women are always there. So there is no way anybody is coming either for an attack or for good that they will not know better than even you, the owner of the farm. It is a hunter that know even the peace. So I was able to also put a working document on ground that was going to prepare hello? That was going to prepare us for a perfect development. And as such, I know that if I had my way, if I had my way then, I would have endorsed all these. The documents are there. I will present them to you appropriately. If I had my way, if I were the governor myself then, the thing would have been very much more functional. Long after I left government, I saw these community volunteer guards being promoted in a manner I wanted the document I presented to governor to be promoted. And a lot more implementation would have been there. And it's partly what I did that is now being practiced. So if I have such an opportunity as governor with my team, I assure you that we will be a perfect team. You will like your state. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, you touched on some other issues and about which have to do with the issues that the state is currently experiencing with the headsmen. And there's a question here. Someone sent in a question. And the question is, what is your take on the anti-open grazing law in the state?
Okay. Anti-open grazing law in the state is a perfect one. I completely support it. I want to assure you that if I have an opportunity, I'll do even much more. I clap for the implementers of that law. The then speaker, my close friend, Tete Nchangi, with the president-governor and the rest of those who were in position to append and seal the charge to that, they did very well for the state. I stand here to appreciate what they did. And I want to assure you that with the help of some of your experience, some of you are brothers that are out there in the diaspora, that have seen certain things we are not able to see in the state. And then those who are also on ground, putting their ideas together, we shall make that law a more stronger one, but with a better level of implementation. Because we need to ensure such ranches that we needed to be in place. The ranches are not there. We need to get them established. So I support the open grazing law 100%. And I hope to promote it even much better on the path.
Okay, yeah, there is a follow-up question to that. And the question is, you talk about ranches and stuff. Should it be the responsibility of the state government with mega resources to establish those ranches? And where will you acquire the land for the ranches? Are you going to take land from farmers? And if you succeed in getting that land, how will you be able to vet the people who will be occupying the ranches to avoid a situation where you just bring in some lawless people close to the people to live there legally, leave the ranches at night and commit crimes at night in the neighboring areas?
This question has two phases. The first phase is that of where I will acquire such land to create ranches. The second is the security of the people, assurance of security of the people having such challenges with us with the expectation that they might leave the places at night to do wrong things. And then from the background of your question, you talked about whether I see the sensitivity on the part of government not to have done that. To me, it's not insensitive. A law like any other is always open to amendment. You cannot start a law in one day and then have it full. Every law is open to amendment. So such opening that was there would have been amended in another administration, maybe my own as a company. But then talk about the lands. Benue has enough lands to permit those accepted to ranch within the state. We are not, the ranches, one thing must have in mind is not that you are going to give the land to the husband to come and be ranching there. And both of the ranching there would even be your Tidoma Iggede brothers who choose to own a cattle. They could own their goats. It's not just about cow. The ranches would be, and then the land in Benue, every local government wants to try to carve out a land to the community. The whole community will allow it with their true understanding, with government, to ensure such places exist in their place. If you look at the Chogankato Ranch, if anyone has been privileged to be there, that land is so massive. The space there is more than enough to create as many ranches as you can. You can create 300 ranches in that place of more than 20 hectares. But then you wouldn't have been able to do quarter of that land. So there's enough land in Benue to create ranches. Also, the security of our people while the ranches are prohibited, the open ranches is prohibited and limited would have been more secured. The eyes of the people would be on these people. The host community has their eye. And that is why I told you about establishing a hunters' group. I just call them hunters. You know what I mean? They will know their nicks and crannies, why even the ranchers are asleep, that involves about the security of the state, every day, every hour, every minute, every second. So I assure you would have had a perfect oppression even with these people. And they will live in fear among the And they will live in fear among the host community. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, honorable. I have a, I have another question that, uh, is from the floor. And, uh, the question is, uh, how much does the Benue state government owe now? And how will you pay off this debt?
Well, the issue of the debt in Benue state government. Forget about how much the state owe. Forget about it completely. It is never a problem paying the debt owed to anybody by the state. There are so many ways to pay back. Beno has a wonderful location that reverse her the opportunity to raise money at any given time. There are so many areas in the state, so many resources in the state that you can use one, a quarter of it, just a little chunk of it to assure an investor who will bring enough money to solve the state's problem only in one area. I don't know the reason why Benue should owe. Beno has no business with owing. And I will use this opportunity to tell you that Benue is a first-class state in Nigeria. By first class, I didn't mean, uh, by creation, I mean by geographical location. Any state that has such location as Benu, I keep telling people that is privileged to have such large water as River Benui. Also, uh, able to have such mineral resources like you already know that exists in the state in Vileus, Nukris. And there's no local government in the state that doesn't have the resources, as much as I know. So that such a state, even if you want to use the zinc, only zinc that is there, if you choose to use only the gold that is abundant in Conde, when you were tested the last time, we were able to get twenty-two point something carat of gold. Just one million resource. You, there are so many investors that are willing to go in where there is such a security for them. And then their own issue is not money. If they had that assurance, if you motivate a quarter, just a quarter of our abundant mineral resources, not a whole, just a quarter of it. There are willing people that will put in their resources, they are ready to stay there for this day. They will take their money back and the state will get their people employed. And then the state will get a lot from that. Why international revenue is being created to the state as well? Then it would have created tourism ventures for the state. So I don't think the issue of owing is an issue here because even if you are owing in trillion, it's not a problem to settle back.
Thank you, honorable. But the fact remains that, uh, people have been owed, um, salaries for months. And, uh, recently, the state government took, I should, here we should call it a payday loan of two billion naira at twenty-five percent for three months. And we know that the next administration will pay that debt. If you happen to be the governor, how could you be able to tackle the salaries that be owed pensioners and every other person? And at the same time, take care of this debt that has just been killed or is about to be, uh, about to be killed and have money to do other things like create an enabling environment for an investor to come and put money there. Because the fact is a true investor, someone who worked for their money, will not want to go and put their money where they're going to lose.
Hey, what? Okay, uh, Mr. President, uh, the issue of money, other money is being owed by the state, I've also addressed. But the issue of salary, pensions, gratuities of our people, uh, is where I'm not sorry to say our government, certain areas, uh, uh, positions in government and some, I don't know, but that is where I see irresponsibility in our people. So I look at the issue of, uh, salaries, pensions and gratuities of people who have worked for their money. No reason is there for them to be owed. And I also keep saying that it is never supposed to be seen as an achievement that the governor pays up to debts, the salaries of their people. It is a such a true, uh, responsibility of the state. The government has already done that. To me, it is programmed. Once the month ends, everybody have their due. Where I see people being owed is when I notice this real greed. You have no business with people's salaries and why should they be owed? Now, there are banks, by the time you partner with bank, when their money comes, you have a debt to the bank. You don't have business with paying salaries, you don't have business with owing salaries. But our administration would allow the opportunity of our, our worker, our pensioners who suffered for their money. Uh, some people got lent on their duty posts. Some people got hurt on their duty posts and you wanted to remind them of that. You, when the salary is programmed with a bank, at the end of such a period, what the time come, they see they are lot. And then me, the issue of pay payments on their salary, I wouldn't want to know the date of their payment because I don't have a business with that. It is not supposed to be seen as my achievements as a governor. So, uh, the issue of salary being owed may not be heard during our administration if we are privileged. Because we don't have a business with their money. And then we do a very positive, uh, agreement with the bank to maintain what the government has already established. It's a subtle thing. So nobody's salary, uh, i- i- is going to be owed for any reason.
Thank you, honorable. Uh, a follow-up, a follow-up question to that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, recently, the Benue State House of Assembly voted against, uh, local government autonomy. And, uh, everyone of us here can remember or at least been told that in the past money, uh, the local government councils used to have their budgets. Uh, they could do things, little things, you know, give little contracts to widows and people like that. And, uh, people in the neighborhood, the live, the young people in the neighborhood, we get little jobs that they can take. At the end of the day, they have some change to uh, buy beer, sit around with their friends and drink and be happy. And that kind of promoted security in the rural areas as well. Uh, what we have now is money comes to the state. Uh, we don't know if that money goes to the local governments. And local governments are doing nothing, they're doing practically nothing. Uh, do you support the state? Do you support the state being against local government autonomy?
Uh, uh, well, exactly. This is the best of all the questions I've been taking from you. And I would like, I will tell you that, uh, I had headache when I heard that nonsense, I call it nonsense. So I don't understand the reason for our state assembly to support people of opposing the local government autonomy. When you see people do like this, then it is said by the fruit who shall know them, you know the wicked people. Some of these people were there. I, I, I don't know, I want to take you back briefly. Let me remind you of, uh, when Governor Jada Kume was, uh, and the hem of affairs of the state leadership and governor. That was a timeline, some of us saw local government do contracts. I happened to go for Bannika Local Government where we had one, uh, Simoti Onaka. He did a lot of contracts, he gave a lot of, uh, uh, contracts to so many people who supported him to be chairman. People were interested in pointing to. I can remember my late uncle, Akad Wamumu. He came over one day, he said I should drive him, he said Onaka. He went there and he was given contract to do coven that led to his house. People who go there, even the councilors were given contract by the local government. They were, they were given opportunity to bring people that will be given contract. Councilors at the local level, people were supporting them with a hope that, yes, uh, they will feel the importance of it. This was until the time of, um, introduction of, I'm taking to history, at the introduction of a ministry for local government and Chita Se Affair. That was the evil that came to our place. Every state went to establish that ministry, some states I didn't do, never, now that I saw that, oh, they were being foolish. In Benue, I remember very well, during Jada Kume, uh, the, the whole thing started and my, my dear brother, Timba Shijia, was removed from military information as a private commissioner to come and head local government and Chita Se Affair. And this report started exacting wickedness in Benue state. I'm not saying, uh, the person I call his name, my brother Shijia, exacted wickedness as a person, no. I am saying government started, is, is that in wickedness? And after Timba Shijia, they brought Imano Odeni. After Imano Odeni, uh, Sushwa came in and brought us Samodi. Look at, who gave us, uh, Solomon Wombo. And then, when Othom came, he gave us a title Zam. After title Zam, he brought the president, uh, Yama, Zam's younger brother, Barista. I keep wondering, anybody that is brought to that place is, is feels that they are brought into next video. So that is the suffering of our people. During my administration, I want to assure you, first of all, I was crabbed and noted. There will be nothing like the rule for all governments. No one person's cobo at the local government. If, if I am governor, I want to assure you that nobody at such point as local government, uh, as local government, hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? Like during my time, I assure you that local government will come back to awarding contracts. I remember when, uh, Senator Kanyi was chairman in local local government. He gave my very good brother, uh, Asma Alchado, a contract to build a lot of things there. That was local government project, Alchado was a local government staff. His targets is this one. And then, after architect, a young architect, he was promoted. He started getting small, small project, there are too many graduates who are, uh, who are, uh, graduates of architect, architecture now, they cannot do projects. Because how many people are able to assess the governor? When they see police standing, mopo, standing with guns everywhere, even if you work for these people, sometime when they are in power, they don't remember you. And then you can't assess them. But the local government chairman are there, setting certain barriers and ceremonies to them, they give it to them. The, the councilors are there, they're going to assess them easily. These are the people that in the local area, uh, are now made poor people, politicians, are made poor people in the local area. This is one thing that also needs the courage of young politicians to, to work. I will assure you that in many villages like mine, the richer people are teachers. The richest people are teachers, when teachers are not paid, nothing happens in the village. And the troopers there are the ones suffering most. When there were these, uh, local, local, local contracts, if you notice the level, hello? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
If you notice the level of, um, crime in the village, even with local court system, is existing in your own villages. And so I, I wouldn't know, a young man you come that you, you, you believe is supposed to be your, your need, you're supposed, supposed to be somebody you should be taking care of. Would have been seeing a lot of things that, uh, would have done a lot of things that you don't even know, you cannot imagine about them because they are idle. The local women, women are suffering, local women in the villages are suffering. The little children are not being well nurtured because there is, to an extent, there is no way you train a, a child today in our current society without little, uh, little resources in your hand. But sometimes you see little girls, little girls who are under age having sugar daddy. Sugar daddy, because their parents are dead, they are helpless, they are wet. You see your parents is poor, don't, don't blame some of these parents, there is nothing, sometime the girls are sitting in the house, you don't know. So there is so much poverty because the local government, uh, administration is pro-culture by the governors.
Okay, thank you, I think, uh, yes, uh, thank you, we extended your time, uh, on that question. But thank you so much for, for the answers and for the passion you have. Uh, uh, the other question we have from the floor is, uh, what is your plan for opening the rural areas in Benue state? Uh, it's a two-part question. And if you can, um, maybe spend not more than three minutes on that, so we can be able to accommodate, uh, the next part of the question, that would be great. Thank you, sir.
All right, so, um, I think, uh, if I'm governor, watch out for me. The person I'll have as the head of project monitoring, if I'm governor, just watch me out. The person I'm going to have as the head of project monitoring holds my heart. Because the last administration, uh, they, I talked about Jada Kume's administration, it's not like I'm making so much emphasis on you, but it's when I saw something happen positively. There is one late, uh, Tony Hamatian. I'm sure you know him, or you must have heard of him. Tony Hamatian was heading, um, project monitoring and he gained a passion. This man was the most busy person in government. Even when they are with little bit of projects. Under my administration, I want to tell you that it's going to be restless moment for the person checking out which projects have been done and which have not been done. And the person will have no respect, my son. Because local government will be embedded. The person in charge will be able to connect people in the local government to know what you are able to do, you must account for what they are there for. And look at the level, I don't know when last you visited your village and where it is, I don't know. If it is in, let's say, uh, let's say down to Bandeka Avenue or Konshia Avenue, you will see how oranges are wasted, you will see how mangoes are wasted. Some is simply because there is no access road. And then they cannot take it to directly, I was in, as I talk to you, I'm in Abuja now. But I was in Makudi three days ago, I was in Bandeka three days ago. I went around the state talking to people and I saw a lot of terrible trees. On my own, I bought three bags of orange at the rate of one thousand, five hundred euro because I was buying one for five hundred. What is zuba here in Abuja, a bag of orange, find out, it's twenty thousand euro zuba. Two liter. Twenty thousand euro a bag of orange. So they buy orange in our place when they are able to manage and bring it out. At the rate of five hundred euro per bag, how much is the cost of co- uh, conveyance to Abuja? That they are having twenty thousand per bag. So I bought three orange, uh, three bags of orange. Because I have a lot of friends here, I share for them when I come back. But I'm telling you that orange is being wasted, even at that, a lot of the ones that were plucked and could not be parked because the vehicle came and left it. And they are, during the time of mango, you see it wasted.
Okay, uh, thank you, honorable. Uh, the second part of that question is, uh, and, uh, it's kind of related somehow, I don't know, because, uh, insecurity causes a lot of, uh, problems for us. Uh, we will not be able to develop because of insecurity and you touched on some of those things. And, uh, the second part of that question is, how much is the security vote in the state? And do you support the continuation of this process of voting huge accounts as security vote? And do you support the opaque nature of how this security vote is spent?
The issue of security vote has always been repeated. But then, considering the situation of Benue today, everybody needs to win such argument that, yes, there should be nice security vote to the state. But one thing is important But one thing is important that we must know. Do we have a reason to deprive our people of their actual ancestral locations? Our people do not have to stay in IDP camps permanently. It is part of the reasons why you see large security votes for the state, it never used to be so. Um the usual security vote will be practically reduced if a government is willing and as well able to move the people back to their locations and provide them such security at their doorstep. Because a good example, we have these people uh CJ here. This civilian John Tarko is listed, but they will always be led by our own souls. Who will neither police nor soldiers. But like I told you earlier, uh when you see, when you see this um hunters in the villages, they understand the environment better. If you bring a general to lead the army, he needs a local to lead him around, even though he has the location of that place is about to be spread within. In our place, you need a a general would need a hunter to take him around. I remember when Sushwa appointed Ali Uteshaku the head of that team. When Ali Uteshaku left that place, there is one young man that came in. One very young guy. That was Sidi Mahali. That young man, among the rest of them, basically calling them full on. These guys do a lot. They are able to do a lot in ensuring that our people are in their locations, if they had true government support, I mean true government support. So the issue of security vote, like you act, not like I'm digressing too much, but the issue of security vote is to be no point of arguments, if our people are back home and then the security is provided for them and it does, it should be cheaper than just parking them in your place, even more endangering their health. Thank you.
Okay, um. We have uh we have another question from the floor.
Okay.
And I'm going to read it to you.
All right.
It says uh uh you should give examples, what are the examples of those resources that you say Benue State has? And uh
Okay.
If you think the loan that the state is indebted to the loans they have taken is not a problem. The question is, do you know how much we owe as a state? Do you know? Because um as an aspiring governor, uh that is something you will deal with when you get in office. And we thought that you should have an idea of how much it is.
How we know? Hello?
Oh, yes, we are listening to you.
Okay, so I told you before, and the question came to me. The second part is if I know, the first part is uh why I say it's not a problem. I was make able to make a person that I should be honest to each. I can't drastically say that it is not a problem to owe. No, it's not like I'm supporting we owing, but I'm telling you that I will give an instance to establish the fact that as we're owing, it's not a big problem, it should be sorted out appropriately. And I give an instance, the the uh the person started from if I know the resources they set up, yes, I do. And also if I know how much the state ha is owing, yes, I also do. But I want to tell you that all this will not be too much of a problem for the state because it is sorted out. We have a functional thing that if given opportunity, will be able to ensure the state is free for all things in a reasonable interval.
Okay, um uh on the same topic, how much do the state get from the federation account?
Okay, such amount is fluctuating. The state got the last time that I knew, where was this month? I've not too come around with that for the last few months. I got distracted, but I used to keep record of such. But I'm not too concerned with it at the moment.
Okay, uh thank you, uh we have another question here um from the floor, it says uh uh you should uh tell us about one uh Kurang who also holds out himself as the flag bearer of uh of the SDP that uh his B boats are all over Makudi. Uh who is actually the the gubernatorial flag bearer of the SDP?
Okay. Uh Kurang, Mr. Gudha from Bandeka. I knew him long before his assets, the aspiration also to a get a ticket that I'm holding. I am a wish to forward to your WhatsApp after this conversation. Uh so that it will be clear of of certain questions. I will forward to you the Ainek Potter, the publisher as a sketch. I also sent to you um the letters publication by the party national secretary which uh made in the state coordinator for all SDP elections in Benis twenty twenty-three. Uh which is a position made only for the material candidate of this state. And that is the standard of every party, except where uh this party does not have a governorship candidate, any other person could be given as a leader. Uh but then, talking about Jeff and Kurang. He has been a good brother. I don't know, he indicated interest to run for governorship, to aspire. Also one uh Mr. Tasswadi indicated interest, same as I did. All of us paint an expression of interest for the aspiration. And then there was a death of screening the day of primary. Both of them never turned out. And this was supposed to be completed at a two o'clock because the party chose to wait. It was finished at very late evening hours. I was the only candidate that attended the screening and then a due uh primary was done. And then I was declared the winner of the election, uh the primary. The documents were returned to the nation secretary of the party. Uh the state Ainek, the Ainek wing of the state, represented by the late Akuranya also took documents, the country, the state also were there, they took their documents. To which three members were appointed, ensuring that I was the candidate. Then when we got to Abuja, uh the nation secretary of the party under the chairmanship of uh Sheikh Gabbam, uh the national chairman directed, like every other state, that my name be given to Ainek, which was done. This thing happened in everything finished early August. Then long towards the end of uh into the middle of September, Jeff went and arranged one, a certain group of people, about two or three. They started agitating that I was not supposed to be the candidate, they should remove me and replace me. I kept asking the reason, and the only reason they could tell me was that I am not having money to run the campaign. He is the one that has the money to run the campaign. They continued this thing, on the one day I had, they went to report at the nation secretary, the nation secretary called the state members of the party and the state leadership of the party, they went to the nation secretary, out there in Abuja. The first day, they meeting the no-hold, they went back, the following day they came and the party instructed that they should go home and solve that problem immediately. Even though my name had already gone to Ainek, they should go and solve that problem so that the two of us, she are member for the party, there will be no run code. We went back to Makudi, had a meeting in uh Samadigi's house. The wife, Una Adingi, is the house or head candidate for our party in Buruku. We had a meeting in the house. In that meeting, there are also documents that the state government and the state school of the party sat down and uh in their wisdom said some people are complaining about uh my success at the primary, so um they should choose they should still uh make a choice on who they want now. So in that meeting, so many people were there, but only only fifty-two were due to make that decision because the local government chairman that were there, the party local government chairman that were there, also some stake uh stakeholder, including state school, that were there, they majored also, only fifty-two. The rest were candidates in in president, all the candidates were there. The total candidates, ref and the fifty-two, some of the candidates were all there. So in that uh meeting, they did a mock voting in which I got forty-eight votes. Again, Jeff there had three votes. The records are also there. This thing was, this document was circulated to every member of the party that attended the meeting. And it was also brought to nation secretary. All of us thought the matter was over. Then, long after, my name came out, I didn't know there was any problem at all. We are in a published name on the fourth of uh October, I have a published name of candidate for state assembly election and governorship with a deputy. I started hearing that the guy is agitating, he's complaining that his name should be there. Because I understand he went round, he went behind the old town, thought he could buy up uh people. He went to get some people at the nation secretary. As a matter of fact, uh I was not there, so I cannot tell you how he managed to get even um receipts, some stamp receipts, which I suspect he got through arrangement of. Uh what, that one is not my problem, but he forged a lot of documents that he now took to court. And he went to court on the fifteenth day where normally uh the law is, it should be within the first fourteen days if you have a complaint to lay down. So he went to court on the fifteenth day to complain at the federal high court in Makudi that I was I was supposed to be a placeholder. What he did, he did not submit, they they the arrangement they did, they did not get, give me the summons. The court did not send me any summons with their understanding. So later, uh when I got the information about being in court, I never knew at all, it was a friend with this coffee, he told me that this people came to drink here, they were saying uh very soon they'll collect that ticket for me because they took it to court. So what, which court, I'm not in court, if I told him that I should I should be careful, I was able to take time and uh find out. And then I realized it was true. Because I sent somebody to the federal high court to confirm this. They said they had me by substitution, that the substitution said they do, and uh me I was not there, they didn't, I didn't accept to be sent. What a fiction, there is no accept to be sent, so that they were the these substitutions, the aim was to learn the case in my absence without my defense, no doubt of Ainek. So that at the end of the day, they will collect a ticket for me because of consent or cost, they could write anything against me. But then, uh I've gone to have it, I got to know like three days to the time that the case was going to appear in court. So I paid some money, I was eleven thousand five hundred to get a new proceeding. I got a lawyer who did the uh submission uh defense for me, and the Ainek lawyer also went to court for me. And that day when they went to court, they, I don't know, they 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 took a new date. Ainek was also not served. They don't, the the uh the party was not there. So I don't know, they went there and they took a new date for eleven thirty four, I don't know what they went to say there, but as far as I'm concerned, I don't know, I don't have a chance to do it because normally if if the case was struck out, especially for the fact that uh uh he even went to court late again against the permission of the law, one, two, uh also and that everything he did as a picture that according to his claim, he's praying that I was a substitute, I mean, I was a placeholder that they don't know why it was them that was sent to Ainek, they don't know why my name is here. So I think if the party made mistake that time, is the party now making second mistake of last two for depression where the presidential candidate in whose house I'm sitting now to talk to uh is is also approved and also the national chairman of the party approved, the whole is cool. They are then making the second mission to also approve me as the leader of the party in the state and candidate for the state, coordinator of the elections in the state. Uh I will, I may briefly go into another uh thing now to ask you a question. Uh you are aware that my elder brother, father, high son, they are the candidate of the APC. Is well a bastard, is in court with so many people, uh even his son is involved in court with him, Michael on the car. Your mother is there, sister is there, others were there with him in court, and some are still there with him now. But do you see any of them presenting their posters and B boots campaigning like Jeff is doing to me? Maybe no. Uh because if any of them is doing it, I don't know, does the law permit that? The question is, why am I quiet? The fundamental question is, why am I quiet with all this happening? And the answer to me, I will let you know. I see every politician, I don't know if I heard him very well, sir. I see every politician, good, I see a politician like a tower which reach you back and dry your body. One portion of the tower that you used to clean your eyelids in your morning bath, maybe the same portion, you wouldn't know that you are used to clean your face in your arsenal bath or evening bath. That same tower, that same portion. So uh whatever Jeff is doing, I look at it as nothing, because I see him as a politician who is looking for my trouble today. But tomorrow, it may be the same Jeff laughing hand for me. Uh if he sees me walk where as the governor. I know that uh I suspect that someone is pushing him to do what he's doing. Uh somehow I may say, or I see him as a desperate human being who has successfully jumped into two different political parties in in the space of two months. The young man came, I saw his poster, some are still there, even now, in APC. I don't know what happened.
Okay, honorable.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but uh uh I know I I I we gave you more time to talk on this because uh it is something that uh from the way you spoke, something that uh you really feel um we should all know, but uh we need to move forward. And uh we have another question here. And uh the question is this. Uh our people have been ravaged for years as the federal government subjected our people to the killing machines of the Fulani. This has not abetted, even as we are This has not abetted, even as we are approaching elections. We are not sure if my people in Guerwis and other areas will vote. My worry are twofold. One, what can you do in your present status as an MP to save, I mean, to save this? And two, what plans for rehabilitation, uh, sorry, what plans for rehabilitating these people? Who have lost everything? Should you get elected into office?
Well, whenever this is mentioned, it gets me emotional, quite very pathetic. That we still have these people, I talked about it earlier in this meeting. That, um, it's quite painful that our people are separated from their ancestral homes. The person asking this question appeared to, uh, come from Guerwis. And, uh, another person who asked or has met that happened to come from Kondi in Moore. So I will add more to the question that I met somebody. At, by when I went to address them in Nanav area of Kondi. I met the person, I was showing me a pair of his children that have not known their village, their actual ancestral home. They are born, brought up in a decoy. The, the other one, I looked at him, I said, this one in Moore here, within Kondi, you can't go there. That's plenty of taking over the place. You, as a there, can also confirm with what I'm saying. And that there are some in Guma. There are some in the, the cases, even even part of Gulu and Kaka are affected by the river bank. Hello?
Yes, we are listening to you.
Okay, good. So, I, 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 I get pathetic when it comes to this, this point, sir. What I can do as a person. I already said that I will ensure a perfect security network. Using more of the local security even than the soldiers and more folk. Or even the civil defense, the local security understand their place much more. They will work. Together with the government security. But then, there is no better way to carve this down. Using the local, uh, security that I know. I want to remind you, I'm a traditionalist. That is why I could go into government as head of culture and tradition. Uh, culture and tradition, as well as tourism. As a traditionalist, I believe in what happened. When some Amor Tankas, once I heard this story, came to fight civilians in Benewi. And as I talk to you, one of the Amor Tankas still left there. It was actually one woman who released traditional deeds. The soldiers running with, that machine is destroyed there, nobody can pick it away from there. It's evidence, it's to me a tourism center already. I want to tell you. That those people in Akka are suffering. I went to have a meeting with, uh, our people in Agavu. After Don Awun's house, the late Don Awun. Uh, part of us are on a village, I went after the Agavu main town, I went down to have a meeting with the people together with my state assembly candidate from there. Uh, what I saw. At that place, I saw people running away. They were packing their things. Sir, sometimes, I live in Abuja, sometimes when I'm going to Benewi. I see people packing from, what I'm telling you is something you can confirm. I see people packing from around, uh, Yerwata. From the, in Nigeria, they come to sleep in Dowdu every evening, find out. They come out from Dowdu, uh, from Yerwata, from Otesi, from some of those settlements there. From Uday, they come out from that place to sleep in Dowdu, not even at Gilamaya. They come out down to Dowdu because they are not served at such place. Some go out to go and sleep in Yerwata because the soldiers are permanent there now. The primary schools are there, so there are so many dangers to this. See on what the governance is taking place. Some, uh, caused by some of these desperate soldiers who are left in such deserts for long. And are oished for sex and could make, make, make mess up our girls, our women, they are suffering. Imagine in Kasnala. An old woman directly raped by two soldiers. It was in hospital she ended. Sir, these things are happening around us with how the government is playing. My majors to this, I already said. I tell you, and I tell you with emphasis, that sir. Every place has its own form of defense. Benewi has no big problem concerning defense. I will tell you something, if you see somewhere the literature following my campaign. There is somewhere, a lady published. Now Benewi is sick like every other human being. And Benewi need one thing, like every sick person, Benewi need medicine. Going by my name, Midi, I assure you I'm the medicine for Benewi. I want to tell you that consider a tracking situation in Benewi today. Benewi is on a red point, completely red. With my aspiration, my team that is coming, if allowed. Will return Benewi to yellow with a positive support from the electorate, then you see us on a green spot. But today I tell you Benewi is red, I don't want to talk too much on this. Thank you.
Thank you, honorable. Um.
Bless you.
Yes. Uh, we have had some of the remedies. You have for. For what is going on, has been going on and it is still going on. Uh, as I speak with you right now, uh, just before I joined, uh, uh, this Zoom, uh. Town hall meeting, I spoke to, uh, to someone, uh, back home in Nigeria. And he was telling me to, uh, to call one of my.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, can, can you come again?
I said, uh, just before I joined this Zoom, uh, town hall meeting, I spoke, I was speaking to someone in Nigeria. And he asked me if I called my cousin to check on him. And I was asking, uh, what happened, uh, is he okay? He said, yeah, well, that, uh, he just escaped, uh, being killed. That, um, he paid someone to help him work on his, uh. Uh, so he had been, uh, farm, uh, they were packing the, uh, picking the produce home. And the, the gentleman, uh, was accosted by, uh, some, uh, supposedly, uh, Fulani people. And it just so happened, he was going to meet this guy at the farm and he ran into them. Uh, where they knelt him down, he was begging them. Uh, so when he got there, uh, it was two of them, somehow they were able to escape. But this same group that, uh, accosted them. Went to the, to a neighboring village, I mean, a neighboring farm. Uh, saw a woman who was working there and they cut all his fing, uh, all her fingers. And he's in the hospital in Nakka right now. So, um, this, this has been going on for way too long. Um, we have got, some people have proposed things like, um, drones. To help patrol the state, especially some of these areas that are affected. And we know that that works, it works even in developed countries. And we don't have a large land mass like some of these countries. We administration be open to such ideas like having drones to patrol the troubled, uh, troubled areas. So we can be able to know why it's going on because some of the remedies you, um, you suggested here. If you don't know where something is going on, you won't be able to apply them. So will you be open to ideas such as drones for the state and finance those projects?
Uh, I see, uh. You guys were in a meeting that we had yesterday. Uh, myself, uh, one Dr. Richard Shabey, uh, Omorosunongo and others in Asokoro yesterday. Sir, uh, they show drones is very important at this moment. As if you guys were there or the person that brought up these was there or maybe they shared, they show drones is very important. Completely I'm open to it. And, uh, our administration would do our best to support such wonderful ideas. To add up to that, I told you I'm a business person and, um, presently doing a business. Uh, with a mom based there in California. Uh, in the lead once on a glargo. We are doing a business with the N M P C, presenting. Part of which is, uh. This drone issue, it has a lot in security. It has a lot, even in the forensic aspect of security. So many areas are there, it is devastating. So I will tell you that I'm completely hundred plus percent open to that. But then, um, the issue of husband. Getting to, you know, uh, I can remember this delay that most of the questions being asked there, you know, from introductory part. About four of the question have some concern in heaven. Look at somebody surviving, trying to survive on a soyabini farm. A pathetic story just told me. Muta believes in. Women, children, especially the girl child, if I'm not wrong. Hello?
Yes, we are listening to you.
Oh, good, like you believe as muta. What you just expressed here brought a woman at the receiving end. Those that were male were lucky to survive without woman. Who is always on the receiving end. And like a child who could not run the mice a mark and run. She got her fingers cut off and is now in the hospital. Okay. Everything happened at the time, I can remember in nineteen sixty-four. In nineteen sixty-four. There was a time when, uh, political dissection existed in Timland. And then, uh, people were killed. Babak Tinega was killed in Trumbull. Um, Ekejubu she was killed in Baneka, also I heard Bianca was killed. Amongst others, they even went that time to kill my father, Midi. Or because he offered them a lot of cow, so they left him. He used cow to spare his life. So that, that dissection now I'm telling you history, there was a time during, uh. The two, early, early two thousand, in Kondi and Guev, local government, I lay there and I did what precisely. There were fights about election. All that are history today. What is happening now will be history, come administration on board, a trade that will have the privilege.
Thank you. Uh, we have another question. Is it, what is your plan? To sustain the aspiration of Benewi State as the food basket of the nation?
Okay, um. This is a wonderful question as well. Food basket of the nation. As our name cannot be taken away. Because I told you when I started, uh, addressing this, I think on the second point, we talked about agriculture. I mentioned where the federal government has got the affair to Benewi as a state. And I showed you that even when they are using some states as pilot project for agricultural, uh, effort. They don't use Benewi. They don't use Benewi at all. I think the federal minister agriculture, if they want to do a pilot project, is it the land that is not good in Benewi? Is it the, 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 the perimeter of land needed that they don't have in the state? And then I tell you, um, you know that there's something wrong. One thing, the state must not always, uh, face battle with the federal government at all times and all in, in all cases. Except for necessary. We must learn how to defend the federal government to be able to benefit some things, but, but that is on one part. Without the federal government supporting this state. When Governor Sisora came out government, he did one thing for us. That I always need to remember, the Great Amakudi Water Works. That Great Amakudi Water Works is supposed to supply no just our sheep water, but also rural, uh, water need. Like for agriculture. I will remind you of what Governor Apelio did in Barabu. If I've ever been to Barabu, someone tell you about the story of Barabu, two things are there. I will tell you that if only I had the privilege to be governor. I will revitalize such place. It's a foundation already existing, apparently could lay that foundation for us. And I will tell you that, um. If Barabu is given its needs. You will see Benewi exporting fish, that is agriculture. You will see Benewi feeding the entire Africa only from Barabu. The problem we have in Benewi, we found the only one city. Look at a situation in Benewi. Where we shall have grass in the family. Which the foundation has already been made. Even if we revitalize what is there in Amaladi. You will settle a lot for Jengba Azim. If you touch what is there in Barabu, you will still do a lot for the Kondi Azim and Konfession. So that you will see, Benewi are going into dries in family. To ensure that proper food security we talk about. There is so much we achieve in the state. Through agriculture. I will create agric, uh, agricultural, I mean, agro market. That will ensure no wastage for the produce, uh, home, home produce. To an extent of mechanizing the agriculture. The state will basically maintain its status as a food basket. We have enough water to do that and water is the major mineral is needed for that. We have a lot of manpower, we shall be proud farmers in our administration. We must be in agreement, as a commissioner, you must have a farm. As an advisor, you must have a farm. Even as a local government chairman, once you are there, we must ensure you have a farm. On that, our decision, it's my dream. And I assure you that we'll have many dams. The state will engage into major ventures. Like dam, that all this flood thing, I keep wondering why it's there. There will be no need for that because I know it's the kind of, when I talk about dam, someone will be asking whether I know the, the road for that project. I know. I know, and I'm talking about the state. You are there if a governor in Benewi involve people like you. In, in the US, in other parts of the world will have a synergy with the Benewi people in their area. And will truly give you that support that you need. I know that where your, where our eyes reach, your eyes will be seeing higher. And then if you need work for Benewi, you are going to have an open. And then if you live where for Benue, you are going to have an open uh administration that will make you feel very much at home. If you have been coming home once a year or twice a year, I assure you will be coming home quarterly this time. Because I'm begging you now to urge the muta to aid us even in the campaign. Tell our people that are there, tell even the people at home. Bringing investors is your job. It is your duty because there that you are, it seems to be a more civilized place than where we live in Benue. So it's easier for you to ask such investors, uh investors and bring them home. Begin to defend them now. If you are sure that Benue will be having a governor, Mehdi. Begin to defend investors because I will harass you to bring us investors, who harass you. Look now, use the government, use any means you can do. Bring all your friends that you school rich, that you know are very proficient. Where you are working, think of where you are working, I don't want to know, but you know. You know what you can do for the state, it can open ground for you with our administration. Please. I use this opportunity to also ask uh the muta who has a wonderful agenda of taking care of the people, especially women and each women and children, especially the girl child. Um to campaign for us that will have a synergy, uh support us in the campaign, two of me, we have a synergy with you already. Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, I have um another question. Uh and uh uh I sincerely thank you for uh those wonderful ideas that you have about turning the state around. I know um poverty breeds insecurity and that's why it's been going on. And uh the reason why uh the state has remained poor and is almost one of the poorest states among the states that were created at the same time. Is because uh we depend just on the, we, we are mostly civil servants. And you know, you have asked diasporans to try to converse for investment, bring investments home. I thank you, I thank you for that. Um in the past, many people have done that. Spoken to companies here that were willing to go and do something there. But you know, when you have insecurity. Uh investors are afraid of insecurity because they know they may lose their money. The other thing is infrastructure. I know many questions being asked here. How much money we have as a state? When, how much we owe? If we don't have infrastructure, i- it will be hard to, for anyone to bring a company to go and, to come and invest there. We need to have stable power, we need to have access, roads and stuff like that. And one of the one of the most important things is uh the people in government. Because I know for a fact that even getting your certificate or occupancy when you buy a plot of land is an issue. Which really shouldn't because if the government knows who owed the piece of land, they can be able to know who to collect taxes from, property taxes. But those simple things that can raise revenue are not being done. So are you also willing to make sure that if you are there? You enforce some kind of discipline in those ministries that are responsible for doing what they need to do, like if somebody applies for maybe a business license that is done without the person being uh called, I mean, being expected to to bribe every single individual in that ministry before they can get their certification? It's a question to you.
Okay, um this question has uh three phases. And I wish to refresh them. We talked about uh poverty in the state. Uh so much poverty in the state and poverty strive. Uh whereas insecurity, you talked about infrastructure, you also talk about uh uh the certification of practice. Okay, um I want to tell you something. On this note, I want to appreciate so much the incumbent uh administration. There's one thing Governor Otom has achieved prominently right now that I keep appreciating him. Um the commissioner for land and service through the support of the fed governor and government. Successfully established benches. So this is something that has always been on my mind. As a property dealer in Abuja, I know the value of what we call edges here in Abuja. And then with the establishment of uh Najis in Nakarawa. I was so, as a Benue person, I was so passionately agreed, ah what's happening in my state? This edges hit a lot of stations in Abuja. And then, look at ordinary Nakarawa, Benue cannot do anything like this. But thank God today. Rob no at home, I clap for him so much for this he has done. Um it's a big achievement, talking about certification for properties. Uh I also have a property in government, I mean in, in Makudi, which need uh to be satisfied, but now I'm happy I can go get it.
Okay.
Even when I was in government, but hello?
Yeah, I'll try to have finish answering the question.
With the, with the, with the establishment of uh benches, which successfully Otto has launched. I want to tell you that it is not a big problem again for people to have their self-own for their properties. That is one. Two, uh the issue of infrastructure. Uh where I had a little opportunity, I told you before in this meeting, that I was able to get a can of salt of Oklahoma. And to to give me a, a, a support which they accepted and I was able to acquire a speaking point for the state, which was not finally approved by the government. And I got people who gave us budget to do uh road infrastructure and structural uh fixtures. A one thousand room altar was proposed to be established in Kogane. In that document which I will hand over to you. Then you will understand that I already have a passion for what you are saying. That was just when I was there. Uh a, a, a senior assistant to the government. Because it's my passion, infrastructure, my proposal was for us to have an effective of a cattle ranch in the, in today, in, in today's day. Begin from uh Oboma. Take a road through to Adipo, that market run about to Adipo. Head through San Andrew's Adipo and get to the Kogane. Pass through Kogane, through Achia to uh Jatwaka. Then if you reach Jatwaka, head down to Oboma Street. Meet down Oboma Runabout again. I don't know where, where else to pass through that Oboma Runabout. It's a death trap completely. If I substitute that no way will investors want to come here and establish where they cannot have access to. So that, all of that was acceptable to be done with even a billion involved. I trust twenty-two point eight billion at that time. But Jolozwaja whom I met, I engaged one-on-one. It was not just a small com- company, it was Jolozwaja I met and that is the deal they got me. So I want to tell you that uh you are already talking about a passion that is borned in me. And also I will tell you, uh the issue of poverty. Talking about poverty is like a chicken sleeping on top of a coal and is crying of hunger. A chicken has guinea co, why is it complaining of hunger? Because the chicken only don't know what to do. Um a stage created with such opportunities as that river. We talked about Benue being one of the most impoverished states. They're not wrong, but why is this so? There's a big comment. A comment in the sense that, sir, if you have such a state like Lagos for instance, boundary with water. If you have a place by a river, boundary with water. I take it to Ghana, you know Accra. If you see how Accra is located by the waterbank, then you understand that uh Benue has no reason to suffer. Imagine a situation like the o- ordinary Cardona state, I call it ordinary without fear. With that water that they have, they now came with this administration establishing a dry pot. A dry pot, they call it dry pot. So we are due for a seat for in Makudi if the government is responsible enough to partner the, the remaining state through the river passing and also to partner the federal government and ensure a proper drainage of that river Benue. Even in the process of dredging, the mineral resources are going to get there and take out the project to park. In the process of dredging alone, the mineral sources are grabbing from there and long will take out the project to park. And then I tell you that Benue has no reason to see poverty. See, all the Benue daughters that you go to every city of Nigeria, whatever you hear and want to. I'm sorry, I don't know what you know that happens there. If you come to Abuja and you go to Kaf, you hear and want to. What happens there, I don't want to pronounce. If you go to any mommy, anywhere here I'm wanted. If you don't want to see shame, don't go there. So this may not be happening. People that dominated that type of business, I don't want to pronounce, where they are quite multiple. When uh they got Anafabo in that state, he made people go back. That's one small example. So you are having a brother who has such a broad mind, who is willing and also everyone at the government is given the opportunity to move even the boys that are suffering. If you come to Abuja or any other state that you go, you see a security man, don't go there and eat it. On your, here they now. And watch out for the rest of them. The only thing, it is thread. Someone will not tell you that, ah, Oney did not come to work today because there was there and Oney are the gate of company. Find out, anyhow you go, security man, was with it. Any of these people, they go, it's happy, it's a good, it, it, it's, it's not.
Okay.
It's good.
Sorry for cutting you short, uh Honorable, but uh uh we run out of time and uh there is a question from the floor and uh it says, why revenue generating strategies? Do you have in mind to reduce the borrowing of the state? And create more jobs while reducing unemployment in the state?
Thank you very much for this question. The question is, what revenue, if I get it right, I want to refresh it. What revenue um strategy do I have in mind? Um and then creating more jobs to reduce poverty. Um the revenue strategy is not just strategies, strategies are half. And in almost. One of them, I mentioned before. I told you that uh there are already existing and much, much willing investors. Who are ready to deposit huge money for the state. Come and stay in that state themselves. Extract and develop certain mineral resources that are existing there. With the support of the state government and assurance of security. If they come, are they going to buy their families from whichever country they emanate from? You come here because you have some perfect Italian. I don't want to go into that, but there are investors who are willing to come and even extract our gold, develop it here. They are agreed to develop it within here. They will mine it here, they will use it to produce things here. It's not like we are selling anything raw, no. We are going to do agriculture like I showed you cottage industries that will exist here. The, for you to see mango in Abuja that they buy in Makudi five hundred euros and then come and it's only one, two hundred euros here. It will not be difficult to export mango even out of Benue. It will be difficult because it will not be enough for the state. There will be cottage industries, ignore one, general one. There should be cottage industries like uh what uh our brother Akumwata did in Wando. See tomorrow, tomato is big western. That was a project I started when I was governor. That project never saw the light of the day, so someone came and watched it pass. Today, Otto has done his eight years, as far as I'm concerned, he's done with eight years. That industry, I tell you, is supposed to be a giant industry in the state. Look at the waste text to Martin. And I tell you, I assure you revitalization and you invite. Tell me how many people own that company?
Hello? Uh sorry everyone, uh I was using my personal phone to uh call the Honorable to to make it possible for him to connect with us. So if you can maybe give me a few minutes, I'll try to see if I can reconnect with him and then bring him back online. Thank you.
Hello?
Yes, Honorable, uh we got disconnected. I'm happy that we're able to get you back. Okay, uh yeah, um let's move to the next question, please. Um and the question is uh can you explain how you would provide the energy and power that are necessary prerequisites to industrialization?
The energies and power, yes, they are, necessarily prerequisite for industrialization. Uh provision of the power in a in a state is not going to be a major problem. It's something I started locally. I was involved in search at Kujin, here in Abuja. And I want to tell you that I got open to a very big knowledge that everything is not wasted. I saw wet turns to white in my eyes. I saw refugees. A lot of refugees being gathered, see they peel po- uh potatoes, potatoes, yam. They gather all those uh, that is the other stuff. They tasted one pop and then they call these things inside to decay, decompose. And through that, power was generated. I also got introduced to another thing by one engineer, Vannenge. Who introduced me to the use of combine to generate power using water. Um I have this understanding that we must not depend solely on the national grid. You can do proper with off-grid, even some little industries. They will never experience power failure one day if it depends off of it. Even solar in some places will not depend on only one source of power supply, depending on the kind of uh venture or way, like the kind of organization, I mean, the kind of uh uh industry that establishing. To me, generator, generating state, they will not be too useful in certain places. Because the cost of running diesel could be too expensive. And such voltage of power that the generator would have produced. Solar, which demands more application, could take care. Also, such voltage of power, if not much more, could be produced by this decomposed shrubs and other things that are gathered to create power. Such voltage of power could equally be acquired locally by ourselves through the use of combine, combined of various categories. Even if you know Millennium Park in Abuja. The way they do uh water does not suffer them any meaning in that place. What they use is a normal combine that is used by selenium to cover only that place. And they have constant water supply, no challenge. So sir, I tell you that there is no problem. If we have this idea coupled with such that you may add to us as our administration may be open. Very much more open than ever. To you that are bringing knowledge, such acquired knowledge from out there. And to others who are here with good knowledge that will not having opportunity to contribute their quota. Who open enough to add up to what I've told you that our administration is willing to do. Then we have gone places. Why I say this? Hello, sir?
Yes, we're listening to you.
Yeah, why I say this is that I look at Governor Parakul, a blessed memory. To me, he's a living star. I don't want to say he's dead. His works are living with us. We are the ones destroying it. See what Parakul did for us at the state secretary. He used to do a thing with one move. Where is Ussani came? Ussani wanted to. To renovate the state secretary. He called my brother Moses Ayom. He gave me a contract. I'm calling names because I'm sure what I'm saying. He gave me a contract to renovate brain furnitures. And as I talk to you, those furnitures that were brought later by my brother Moses. If you go there and see waste function by the corner are the new ones, the old ones that were there by a fair of people years, I see there. Why am I saying this? A government that is ready. Must be ready and must seem to be ready in action. I don't want to buttress too much on this point, but I want to assure you. That our administration is going to do a lot. In the area of creating. A permanent solution to challenges of power supply. To ensure proper industrialization and other things that may be needed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The other question is. It's from the floor and the. The person asking the question is saying that he has listened to different as parents talk about Benue state being the food basket of Nigeria. Pointing to the lands and man. That growing up, he saw a lot of small demo farms by the College of Agriculture. Researchers working in collaboration with ADPS to teach new metals and introduce improved crop varieties. That he would expect by now that we have basic forms of mechanization. The issue is to introduce new research findings into our agricultural practices. That today we have two universities, we can hardly feel their impact. What plans you have? What plans you have to take the research activities of these institutions to the small scale farmer out there?
Okay. What the person observed is true. That it was, was a key. And I would like to add, the government that established that is the same government of. Not every law over that time. Our head to head, the government was able to create and a cultural farm, such demo farms were plenty. In my village. At Abay, in that, in my village, we made it, also in Afay, at Boku, also at Yandee. Even in North Bank before Agan Target, such areas were reserved. Nakarood, in Makodi Nakarood, a lot were there. A government came and decided to sell a lot of these things. At Ubak, there is one, it was also sold out. So I want to tell you something that you check the readiness of the purpose of any government. To develop their state. Some goes into government to make money, some goes in with the true model of development. I keep talking about the effect, times, impact of the last governor. And I want to remind you that the more, what I can say about him. There are some areas he saw himself less qualified to handle. So the best he could do as normal it should be, he chose wonderful brains. Who were seen to be the best in such areas, according to his description. He brought them, imagine a Dr. Tenshima in that government. As at that time, imagine a professor Ambo Nagejibo in that time, at the moment. The young people that time who were also involved in that government was people like Shamede Zombo. Who was brought in at the age of twenty seven to handle the media as chief president of the government. Everybody, those are the stubborn guys that time in their own field, choosing fields and life. Look at people like Yomu Awoga, who were very well exposed, apparently. Did not get afraid of the social status that were actually more than his before he became governor. He did not get afraid because he came to achieve a purpose for the state. He was all coming to achieve a purpose of himself. Unlike today, where people go into government. They go in there and want to ensure that, you know, I'm trying to tell you the major problem we have. They try to ensure that they are the richest. They become leader by, they want to become a leader, you are being governor, they want to make a leader over everybody, no. They want to become leader and you know leadership now, they have found everything to money. So if there was a such leader they want to do, they must make sure that the riches in the state, this is what has been happening. So instead of reaching the state, they reach their pocket, they reach their families, they reach their closest friends. So at the end of the day, the state is getting laid, they are getting fatter. This is not peculiar to a particular person. It is peculiar to people with tribal minds that come into government. If you have a willing mind like mine. I will bring people who should teach me in class, they give me a test and I will say genuinely. I'm a no make the test, I'm a study, this are the people I want them to come and handle certain things. If it's in the area of street life that we live. The property business I do, if I'm a governor, I know who are excellent in property business more than me. I know who are the best of security, not by rank, not at all by rank. I know the best of security that will be to these purpose. There are people who are not doing the class for one day, they are excellent in certain areas, you get them there, look at craft activities. So sir, when you are able to identify people who are excellent in their field. They come and you give them three hands, understand this, I mean, underline the word three hands. Don't interrupt them, give them, give them the able, the only interruption is supervision. To be able to ensure that yes, they have achieved what we want them to achieve for the state. Not to enrich you, not to enrich themselves. If they have that synergy with you, there is no reason why the state will be crying after four years of administration. No. There is no reason why a state will be owing whatever figure. A state like Benue, I was like, I was trying to tell you, any state that is located by the water. If you go to proper, they tell you that after this prayer, when you go and sleep, you will dream with water, you see water. The place blessed with such volume of water should not be crying. If you go to ritualism, when they finish cleaning, doing you the traditional cleanse in the fall, wet ground. They will tell you, go and sleep, you'll dream it, you'll dream with water. So a place like Benue, why some of us were growing up in Makodi those days, in the late months of the early eighties. We used to go to where John Hart and never brothers used to express and used to come and upload something. I keep wondering why that happened there and is no longer happening. I mean, this little barge used to come to Makuli and upload things for John Hart and never brothers. I know you know what I'm talking about. From the present ministry work location to Water Market by your right, where they do blocks now. Where they call New Garage by the River Bank, that's where they do the east. So sir, we saw a lot of things, growing up, we don't see those things. Why is this so irresponsible governments have come in play? So we are praying for an opportunity to come and collaborate with you. Benue is thick and Benue need medicine, medicine is here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, honorable. I have another question, yeah, we have another question here. We have heard. And I don't think there's anyone in Benue who hasn't, that one of the biggest problems we have is ghost walkers. And. What, how are you going to deal with the issue of ghost walkers? Where you have people who call themselves stakeholders as if they bought Benue and Benue is their property. And money comes, they have a list of, a long list of people that are being paid. And who don't actually work for the state. How are you going to deal with this issue?
First of all, sir. First of all, before I answer this question, I want to agree with you completely. That there is what is called ghost walker. And the goal is leveraging the state every other day. It is not just at a state level, it is also there in local government. The way governors are treated, local government chairman. There are some big people in local government administration, those people are called heads of personnel. I'm not accusing them of no. I'm not saying all of them are bad, but they all know what I'm talking about. I don't want them to take me for an enemy, but I'm also not sorry for saying the foot. There are people called heads of personnel in local government administration, if I've not heard. There are also some called DJP, Director General for Service Administration. They are like head of service at the state level. There are so many people also in local government administration. Anywhere you see a local government, a local government staff that is in revenue department, that is called cashier. It could be somebody of a greater level, several and below. You see people, our greater important as the team running to his house, going to borrow for him, cashier. There, there are some called treasurer, local treasurer. There could be lower grade levels, but you see senior people coming to them to borrow. They are building the base of houses around. So the issue of ghost walker is this, the people that control this ghost walker are the local government level. Local government chairman are involved. I don't want to blame them at their level. Why is because the moment they get there, these people that are, that are called personnel. DJP and treasurer as well as cashier, they are the ones that come to them. They try to study their body language, but almost every of the chairman now, they go down with body language. Because they want to make it. The way they discover your body language as ready for game, they will tell you the number, the true number of local government staff. And they will let you know the actual number of ghost walker. So this was when money comes to the local government, money for the civil servants are taking short ghost walkers in more. And you know, they are always the first to receive the ghost walker. You know how it affects. They are doing that on the guide that, when I say I don't want to blame them too much, they are doing that on the guys that. They are not having enough for the local government to take home. So after leaving this office, how would I look like? I want to do the house, I want to buy a better car at Shama. I mean, I want to take care of my in-laws and friends. They try to do occasional thing with the so that ghost walker and then in the state. The thing is, so the issue of traction of ghost walker, when I was in government. I saw some strategies that were applied. First strategies will be also deployed, but then in my own time. There is only one way the people will do ghost walker. You go to a home, you see the landlord. He read his body language, it is ready for it. So this, it is not, there is no way you can do anything wrong. Every landlord is a witch and must know the lips and feelings of his house, must know the minds of his children. So now, if I'm a governor that came with the weakness for the state. Then our lord will go to the ghost walker if he to go, but even if I don't do my strategy now, I want to assure you that there will be no ghost walker in my time. But if you want a strategy like to act. There are financial experts. There are auditors who will bring out the ultimate truth. They don't want to bring out this thing, during the time of government, someone came, he did that, the truth was brought up. But then sometimes you start hearing conflicting figures. Even after the truth has been brought up, it still come to you. But I want to tell you that, like you say, there are some people who own the state, who feel their vote, the state and in their own property, so they will bring their base. In my party, there is no godfather. In my party, SVP, we don't have a godfather. There is no godfather, so find out in Benue, who is the godfather in Benue? When SVP came, even my father, that stood for me for any reason, may God rest him, so very well. He has not been buried. One time I called, who gave me a traditional blessing to run for the position, is that today? I'm seeing in tears as I talk to you. I wanted him to achieve him going as governor before he died. In the elder had a first blessing. To go ahead, give me this when I went to him. More than three years ago with this position. So the elders. Who are there with the interest that they want to benefit, they want to take Benue as their own property. Wow, I'm not waging war against it, but I'm saying. Our state will be freed from every such evil. And I don't know if they will allow me to use the traditional school to swear with the people as a traditional person. If I will be allowed to use this one. Contrary to what my daddy, my beloved daddy, Mr. T, used. The Bible to swear on a traditional school, I would not mind to use this one. That does not pity anybody at any, because I'm not going to kill anyone above the state, no. I want to be exposed because I want to probably be judged by posterity. If you swear with the Bible, there are some professors that the Bible can lead, I mean, God can lead good, he can predict, but the swam is wicked. You don't have a choice, you must go. When the blessing, somebody comes from by the corner. Pick a piece of it, go and grind and throw in the water, there is no way you win it back, it's a spiritual picture. So understanding the impact of swam and not being afraid of this because I know what I'm coming to, to the state for. I mean, what I'm coming to state for, I'm not coming to steal money. I'm not coming to come out as a richest man during my time, no. I'm coming to make a difference, such that Parakul did. You cannot tell me that Parakul was the richest man when he left government, even though the administration was concerned. He wasn't the richest man when he left government. But a young man came, a young man came in with a mental concept. At the age of thirty nine, he came to the administration and he was able to do a lot. And he also came in at the age of forty four, he did so much for the state also. Other than that, Kume came in also at the age of forty four, he did a lot. Today, a little boy who just came, he did, he knew part a lot of it, what he could, at the age of forty two, he did a lot. I'm calling you, I'm not so young, I was born in nineteen seventy six. Today, I am forty six years old. I'm putting that these people I mentioned, why they became governor. I'm putting on the floor, it's only a term that has been the oldest man elected into government, the better said at the age of fifty four. I'm just remembering of that. So you, you see, they came in at such young ages and could do so much. Remember when Bahari came here at the age of thirty forty to rule Nigeria? Remember when Bahari came in at the age of uh, uh, his early forty, to rule Nigeria? People keep saying that then, he was better than now that he is coming as an old man. So you see, Baba Yidda came in also as a young person to rule Nigeria, he did well. Before the greed takes them away from the initial intention, I pray my greed will not lead you.
Thank you, Honorable. So uh, the one question someone is asking is uh. Uh, if you are elected, will you allow local government elections to be free and fair?
One person asked a question. I wish I was close to that person, I would give him a handshake, I was not even uh, still to remembering that. I I should have digressed from one of the person you asked me into it. And the reason why, no, but first of all, yes, local government election, not just being free and fair. But also being dull as I went to, and if I'm privileged, I will give the whole government. On my time, more time than they used to have, two years, then they go away. If I'm the governor, I'm having four years, don't talk me from allowing them to do four years too. That is by the way, there are ways, people don't allow this to go through. They want to use it to put in in-laws, they want to use it to settle some favoritism. And then, nepotism comes in. A proper person will come for such election, and they will never let him go, they'll never let him go it, because of nepotism. And then I want to tell you, that by the time you allow somebody genuinely come with an intention and contest, like I'm coming with that genuine intention now. If I'm given the privilege, first of all, you have challenged the person. Even the people that follow him in the team, in campaigning, as I go out to campaign, I go people, they are hearing my ideologies, they are following me. I have a presidential candidate in my party, in whose house I'm sitting, I'm talking to you. I follow him about campaigning, and then I hear his ideology, I know that this is what this one is coming out to do. I know that uh, by the time you start digressing, I don't know whether I want to stay with him again. Same applicable to me, the people following me. So if people come out with genuine intention, as local government chairman, chairman aspiration. Um, but then you come and stop, then you bring an unprepared person, someone that was not even uh, have the knowledge of of the local government. Then you go and impose that person on the people, because you are his in-law, or because you used to have a girlfriend in the house, do this. Or because he was introduced to you by your first girlfriend, or by whatever means. They apply this nonsense and they keep doing it, so I want to tell you, that my time privileged. I will use the privilege as where privileged, to please God. I will use it to ensure that people, the writing is done, because I know what I'm paying. I won't be happy denied the intention I'm having now, as I'm in the rest, in the rest now. If I'm genuinely wrong in the election, I will be the first to congratulate the person that I won. If I am not genuinely wrong, I will especially agree with you, so is the case. I will not put to genuinely have my way. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Honorable. Um, uh, yeah, someone put up something here, uh, you know, there was some time back. Uh, a member of uh Muta was called home to. Uh, to to work, to help the state, uh, he got there. His 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 name was uh Dr. Adur, uh, Adur, he went home. Tried to see what he could do to clean up the system, uh, especially in the area of ghost workers to streamline things. And uh, he was brutally assassinated. Um, if you get in power, will you do everything in your power as governor to unravel what happened?
So what happened to Adur, I know that is the person you are talking about.
Yes.
What happened to Adur can never be forgotten. In the history of my humble life, can never be forgotten, even that day, we spoke, I was Nabuda, we spoke. Um, it happens with someone who are quite close, I used to cherish his ideas. When um, Otom was administrator. Adur could leave the office to come and pick me, in my office. My property office, both of the times he could come and sit with me. His passion was to create, uh, to be the owner of the best golf course in Abuja, that was his passion. So he saw, he asked some persons to show him, this is how I met Adur. He asked some persons to show him someone that can be sincere to him about properties in Abuja. So the person directed it to me, he he asked me to have a note, I said yes. We went there, then I was operating at uh Street eleven, at Batia Plaza, that's the red level. We sat down, Adur, I didn't know I was being intelligent, then I didn't know he came for property. He located me, I friend, directed it to me, we got talking, I saw intelligence in the man. I'm now asking, who is he, properly, he introduced himself, I was so marveled, wow, so we kept close, right? When Otom became minister, uh, this man uh could move into the office, we did a lot of things together, sir. The day I heard the death of Adur. I was confused, I was just a confused person. I almost did not go on because I was forgotten at the second touch, so. Later, I started hearing, it was because he unraveled something, I was about to unravel that. He came without sincerity of a white man in him, so they have to quench him the way they did. Well, I'm not a security man, I didn't investigate his death. I'm just speaking the Apollo talks, but these are the things that hurt. Adur's death can never be forgotten, the question you ask me, whether I will, I will take time to unravel his death. No, I will not do that. If I become governor, Adur is dead and gone, if I have anything to, uh, as a governor. Do to keep his memory alive, I will do that without wasting time, but I cannot promise you that I'm not to investigate his death further, I will never. Um, my own father was dead at his own point. I cannot tell you whether he was killed because I regret to investigate his death. Anybody that is dead and gone, so God has a hand in this, that's my own belief. If God does not permit it, it should not take place, like I'm aspiring with you now, I'm aspiring uh for this position now. If God does not permit it, they know I will near it, but if God permits, no matter what, people like Jeff Corrond, they asked me about, and the rest do. They will only clap hands at the end of the day, and God, he can only be you, because we did everything. And who go to ritual, and who do a lot of prayers, and who do a lot of terrible things to. Uh, stop you, but when God allow it, they don't make subject. So if I can do anything to keep his memory alive, I will perfectly do, and I would like to get uh Muta. Uh, thinking of what we can do to keep the memory of Adur alive. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Honorable. Uh, do we have any more questions? From the audience, if you have a question, please type it in. Otherwise, um.
I don't really think we have uh more questions for this candidate. I will thank him for his time for being very forthright and uh answering our questions. And we didn't get full answers for some of them, but I think he has been done to it enough. So we're wishing the best. Thank you, Muta, for putting this together.
Thank you, sir. Well, on that note, uh, yes. On that note, uh, I really want to thank uh Honorable Ben Batum Mede for. Uh, taking time off his uh very tight schedule, I know he's uh, he's campaigning in every minute count. And I want to thank him for sparing some of that time uh to spend with us. To talk to every Benue citizen who is out there, who is here. And who may uh see the recordings of this conversation. And I encourage everyone to go through it before the elections, so that they can make an informed decision. Uh, like one Muta is advocating, we shouldn't be voting for parties as per say. Because uh there are just letters, alphabets. Uh, and uh to portray that point, someone is in one party today, and he's in another one tomorrow. So we encourage uh people to vote character, vote someone. Who can make a good impact for our state. Um, if we make a mistake, it's gonna take another eighty years, so let's vote right, let's vote people. For what they stand for. And uh, don't sell your PVC card, if you do that, you may use the money for 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 a day or two. But then you have eight years to to pay for it. And uh, we want to thank everyone for taking their time to spend this Sunday with us. We'll be having another this event, um, next Sunday. We'll be having another candidate and we will communicate that information to you. And we encourage you, talk to other people elsewhere, and have them attend the event. We can't tell you who to vote for, because that is not our job. We only want to give the candidates an opportunity to tell you what they plan to do uh for you. Thank you, everyone, and God bless you all.